November 6, 2017, work session of the Summer Sets of Order at 6:02 PM. Can you take welcome? Brian Walton.
Here.
Katie Remmers.
Here.
Marie Colvin.
Here.
Nancy Dressel.
Here.
Courtney Kaposki.
Here.
Bob Dunbar.
Here.
Patty Schott. Our district mission is together we engage, educate, and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to great successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. The next item on our agenda is public comment. We have red cards that would need to be completed. At this time I've not received anyone, any of them. Is there anyone in the audience who might want to make public comment? All right, hearing none, we will move on to item four, topics for action. Item four A is to suspend Robert's rules of order. Is there anyone interested in making that motion? Thank you, Courtney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. All those in favor of suspending Robert's rules of order, please say aye.
Aye.
Followed against, say may. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. So the first thing up on our agenda is policy review. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark and Tasia.
This is the first time we're going through this process. We're going to take some time each work session to take a look at three or four policies. I think we have, how many, we've got a few on there. Six or seven of them. Some were very quick, easy fixes and that, and some, as I noted in my report last Friday, some were used on a daily basis that we didn't really take a look at. I think you all have comment rights on them now. So any, I think we, we just click on them and then comments come up? Is that right?
Yeah, so we have the strike throughs and additions.
Okay. Yeah, the strike throughs and additions are from our people in Neola updates. The comments would be from anyone who has comment rights. And I'm not exactly sure how you want to go through these. If people who have commented on them want to explain their comments and then we can take them back to the drawing board and take a look and see how they fit. And then we can bring them back for the second reading and get them out to you and with an explanation on why we can't, or what have you with these. And Tasia's kind of coordinating the policy efforts here and that. So she'll handle a lot of the cleanup on these. So we can just start with comments on this. This first one, definition one, is again fairly simple, but it is again adding some definitions to keep up with technology. Any major flags we see on that one?
No, I had had a strike through on page. See page number, sorry. It's in the personal communication devices.
Page three. Under the heading of parent.
Under personal communication devices, the one that was added.
I don't see resources. I don't see them. I'm sorry, I missed it.
You're in. It's in alphabetical orders.
Parent?
Yep, so then right under that, you'll see the addition of the personal communication.
Oh.
I just stripped through the option for the telephone communication devices. And then it changed your color.
So the pink, the pink that you added?
So it's going to show up as a different color on everyone's screen?
Oh.
Oh. If you want to see specifically what Katie highlighted, if you click on the comment that has her name on it, it will pop up. And then you can see specifically.
It's the old Tasia here. Oh, where's Katie?
And I think part of that is just the layout of the Neola suggestions that essentially you can check there in between the parentheses that you like them.
I figured that out later.
Yeah. So.
Okay, pay it well to learning type for all of us.
Yeah, absolutely. I wondered if there was purpose within our policies to have the definition to a word agreement, even if that current definition that is there doesn't necessarily apply well anymore.
So what did you want crossed out there?
Like paging devices?
No, the actual word agreement up at the top. The second one down. The suggestion is to delete that word from the definitions altogether. And so one question that I had is I wondered if the word agreement is in our policy somewhere and if it's worthy of a definition, even if, you know, I think the reason it's probably going to be removed is because it's talking about a bargaining unit that doesn't exist anymore.
Okay. Sure.
But I wondered if there was an updated definition for it, if it was, still should be included.
Are you doing searches through these policies to search for, say, the word agreement somewhere, or are we just waiting for Neola to unhook, or?
Yes, at least. I was kind of going in order of the Neola policy update and copying over their suggested updates into this, so I'm not sure where their purpose behind the deletion came from.
So one way we could find out is if you wanted to do a search and look for that word, is we could say, but my guess is that they're looking for contract and you're right, the bargaining unit is probably what took it out, but it's probably also not a good legal term that would be used.
Well, I'm assuming that the word agreement is, in the past, definitely connected to the bargain, negotiated contract.
Just on a quick search, it's also in our, like, budget implementation and purchasing. It says a negotiated agreement in that one. And purchasing, it talks about intergovernmental agreements. At least purchase agreements. And drug free workplace, um, drug free workplace talks about collective bargaining agreements.
I wanted to ask them if there's another term that they're using now.
Yeah, post issuance tax exempt bond compliance talks about management agreements and research agreements.
Sometimes those are all defined within.
The actual policy?
Yeah, so.
That's a good question to ask.
Yeah. We could have to check.
The one about medical advisor? Said the dis, the school district is required to appoint a medical advisor. And then when I looked at district, it's just defined as a school district. And so I was wondering, does that, um, what is the role of the board or the district administrator when it says the school district? Does that mean that the board has to appoint a medical advisor?
Which one are you on?
Well, so the, the medical advisor term.
Oh.
Um, the only suggested changes are.
With the physical examination policy, I thought you jumped policies out there.
No, no, still in the, still in the definitions. Um, but the medical advisor definition talks that says that the school district is required to appoint a medical advisor. Then when you look at the definition for district, it just says the school district.
Yeah, but it's kind of similar to contracts that physical is required by.
Yeah, and that's a separate policy. I mean, this is.
By you.
I'm not that kind of doctor. Not that bill.
So who is our medical advisor?
Well, Katie Convers, our healthcare consultant.
They have to be licensed physicians.
But I don't think we have a medical advisor, right?
Patty Schott, they're pretty good if you're good together.
Tangle and bag of baddie, huh? Have we ever had a medical advisor?
Not that I'm aware of. Years ago it was a nurse. That was many years ago. That was like when I was in high school.
Yeah, but this is a bill review. Can we find out if that's statutory or?
Well, I'll have to find out.
We still have a nurse.
We have a school nurse, like a district registered nurse. Is this something different than that?
This is a licensed physician who reviews the, um, annual review of the district emergency nursing services.
So I wonder if it's the person that our district nurse reports to?
We do contract with, we do contract with a person to provide nursing.
So I'm wondering if it's her report that looks, so it's, if that's the person that looks at her report. That's all I can think of.
We don't, we don't say that there could be a nurse, because isn't that a nurse?
Well, but it, but what you read to me, it says the licensed nurse, or the physician that reviews the licensed nurse's report, yes? Is that what you read?
Nursing.
So it will participate in the annual review of the district emergency nursing services plan.
So I'm wondering if that.
You also have a medical advisor fulfill other roles.
No, it says the medical advisor shall be a licensed physician.
Yeah.
So is she a physician that's overseeing them?
No, she's a registered nurse. So I'm wondering if it's who she reports. I don't, I don't know.
So we're required, by this language it says we are required to appoint one.
Correct, okay.
Annually. But can we find out if that's statutory or not?
We'll have to find out.
Well, and I don't know if it's an issue or not, if we have policies that just say the district or the school district and don't delineate board or district administrator. But within our definitions, if it says the district, it's not clear who's responsible.
And is the statute.
I think in the technology resources there was a theme I seem to, but maybe Katie.
You know, what I wonder if we're able to make something.
Yeah, we're good. Any other questions about?
On this one?
Yeah.
Any other questions or feedback on the definitions policy?
Okay, next one I got up is participation at board meetings. And I think our only change on that was adding work session to that. You okay there?
There were a couple there.
Pardon? Well, yeah, it's a typo, isn't it? Which we made up.
Yep, just to, I mean, I guess I just would like a little bit of feedback from the board. We have not, we have consistently been having public comments on regular session agendas and work session agendas. When we have had a separate special session agenda, typically it has been on the night that there already was a regular session or work session, and we have not included public comment on that agenda. But the way that this is reading now, my understanding would be that we'd have public comment on every agenda. Is that how the board would like to see it interpreted and implemented?
So I would like it to be, if someone does choose to express themselves, we're not going to say to them, no, you cannot, this is not for me.
It should only be twice a month, so.
We want open communication.
And didn't you have a conversation, and it made it wasn't here, about increasing it to like three minutes?
Yeah, and I think we're going to look and see.
I think you have, we already have 20 minutes and I think the chair can kind of divvy that up however they want to divvy it up. And you can also, at the time, let's just say for some reason you have, you can extend the time, if not, the board can extend the time.
Sure.
If you've got a big topic that people want to speak on, say, you know, we're going to go to 30 minutes for all the comment, rather than 20 minutes or.
Sure.
Or have you got a few?
I would just like to throw my support around to three minutes, because two minutes is hard. I know I tried it before.
And I know.
Really fast.
Really long.
No.
So I'm in favor of the two. You talked about five minutes.
And that's two.
No, 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 five minutes.
Well, if there's one person and there's 20 minutes, are you allowed them to take both points or just the three? Okay.
I mean, the way that I interpret that language and read it is that each individual has a maximum two minutes.
Per person.
And that all of the individuals together.
Yeah.
Potentially are limited to 20 minutes.
Of course, it does say per person, per topic.
True.
But I think you can control the meeting until nine, so.
Yeah, for consistency's sake, I will be, I've been learning and improving, and I would be getting out a timer and trying to cut people off at two minutes, just to be consistent and fair. So if two minutes is what the board wants to stick, if that's fine, but I too would support that. I also.
And I take in mind, keep in mind, how many have spoken for an extended period of time, there really aren't that many.
Right.
I'm far more on one hand, so.
So it's not like you have three minutes.
Want to move it to three?
But I like how you said up to three, so we encourage them to be brief in saying up to three.
I don't have a problem. I, you know, I give two minutes is some kind of time, I don't know, time.
You're okay with three? How you feel about five?
Just put three in.
Three.
Three's good.
Three. I'm going to forget, are you?
Yes, please, go for it.
So how did we leave it, I'm sorry, sorry back, because I just found the statute. How did we leave it for that licensed physician? Is that, does that fall on you, Tasia, to look that up, or what happens to it?
Yeah, we're going to, it's a couple things. You know, hopefully the preword and the medical advisor, what are.
Licensed physician.
What are statutory requirements to do?
It is, by the board inherent, arrangements shall be made with a licensed physician to serve as medical advisor, just to school district's standards. So, sorry.
Okay. You good there, though?
Yeah.
Maybe a little graduation requirements.
Is it going to say?
So everything that had to deal with 16, 17 is gone. So we're in the 17, 18 now, or they open up here.
Always skip along.
Opened up the, what are we on?
14, 16. So we're back on physical examinations?
Uh huh.
Did we get legal advice on this one?
Yeah, physical examination.
Yeah.
The change there had to do with controlled substances.
So in the note, it does talk about the legality of it and suggests that it should be done with the advice of legal counsel. Did we seek legal counsel?
Not yet.
Are there any other board members that are interested in legal counsel in that portion of the suggested language?
What is the normal, like, at the county, do they do routine?
It depends on the job.
So someone that's written.
Law enforcement.
Okay.
It's a lottery.
It's a lottery of the badge, is it?
How about Aunt Anderson's, is it, why everybody?
Highway?
To do the drug tests?
Yeah. Yes. Most private sector, do they call you to this, Katie?
I don't. I mean, we've never had any upstairs, but I think if you're doing highways job, or say the nurses in the nursing home, or law enforcement.
This is a Neola.
You'd probably have to.
Maybe they should be doing that.
Maybe they should, darn it.
Not a big family, but.
I'm fine with it.
Well, Neola put that in there, so we'll find out if that's, where we stand on that.
Are there suggested, do they send you along the suggested administrative guidelines?
No. Have they sent you? When you met with?
Have you tested anybody, Mark?
No, not on this. Tasia and what's his name, was, was a consultant. Stu. Stu.
Well, it's telling though, the court's position right in that paragraph. You know, positions involving safety sensitive, and I do think that we are in that kind of an employment situation.
I know. I mean, it depends on the job.
Any that interact with kids, don't you think? And don't they all?
Well, most of your driving violations and things like that, where you have people driving, kids, as they come into play.
Okay.
Or if you're operating heavy equipment.
We better know about this. That's why we have a couple readings.
That's true.
So I thought this referred to administrative guidelines, and I guess.
Well, procedures, no. So.
Such, the end of the first paragraph, such examination shall be done in accordance with the district administrative guidelines and applicable law.
But we don't have a process for drug testing.
I get nervous approving a policy that doesn't, that you don't have the guidelines for.
It's not just drug testing, but that you do the physical for.
Yes.
Well, it's physical, too, so you don't have any injury, that you come back and sue the school district for a workman's comp claim. That's the other reason that this exists.
So do we currently have guidelines for the physical and the TV test? Like, does everybody go to a certain clinic and?
You know, there's, there's something in, I know in our administrative contracts, although it wasn't mine. I just, I can't, I don't know whether it is required by, uh, quality requiring physical.
It's for all, for all employees. They're given a welcome letter when they're hired. Here's the clinic that you go to, here are the two doctors that you see.
Maybe one of them's our medical advisor?
Perhaps.
Maybe they should.
So my understanding is that all new employees.
Yep.
That are required, and that's, those are the extent of the guidelines that I'm aware of, as far as going to a certain clinic and seeing a physician.
Can't prove the answers are those, and any other questions on that one? That was the only change from current practice. Our graduation.
So I remember last year when we were talking about probably the same policy perhaps, or the number of credits that we needed to graduate. I remember, I don't know which board members had voiced concerns about the number of credits that we require, that it was lower.
There was something, do you remember what it was last year, counselors? There was a difference.
So our, you want me to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The number, Chan, would you like to speak to that?
We're good.
Okay. The number of credits that we require is low compared to other schools, and it's the minimum that DPI requires. So the concern has come up.
The 22.
22, yep. But in order to increase that, you know, we have to change our schedule, so. Or increase how many credits.
So this year it's at 22?
Yep.
And that came out of the electives, correct?
Yep.
I wondered if section B should say 2018 and beyond, or if we should remove 2018 and just have it stop at credits, so that we don't have to update this annually, unless the opportunity for credits changes.
Well, if we're above that, in A it says class of 218 and beyond, that's a graduation requirements.
Yeah, potentially that class of 18 and beyond could be divided to.
Can we say that graduation requirements? Or?
I think if it, it'll just list credits up at the tab.
We just strike that out altogether.
Yeah, you could. Strike it out and then.
Strike, can you just leave it as credits?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and strike it up. And then go down. See, must have been 22 credits.
There you go.
Yep. From the title wave to the waved.
Yeah, that's nice. And the wavier to the wave.
That's a real rough label.
Wavier.
Do we need the last line of that paragraph?
On which one's that? All credits listed?
Yeah, above will still be required of the student above the wave reading course in order to graduate.
Where are you?
Last sentence of the paragraph below, reading requirement.
So I have it highlighted right now, I don't know if you guys can see that on your screen.
Yeah. Do we need, do we need that?
Felt repetitive to me, but.
I can't even understand.
Seems confusing.
What's that?
It seems confusing.
So let's take it over.
Go for it, Katie.
Strike three. Any issue with D?
Nope. Any questions?
There was a student who did not meet the above requirements, and then, Chan, is that what we talked about, that committee's never done?
Yeah, you know, I think probably John and Katie could, at this point, speak to it probably a little bit better than I could, but even when I read that, even since I've been here, I, I'm not aware of that committee being used. I don't know, maybe it's been used in the past, it's very possible. You know, we had a discussion about it, just that, you know, so far practice has shown, again, just in my short experience, that, you know, if there's a student that is not meeting the requirements, that. that we are going to intervene long before, you know, we hit, right before graduation. What that looks and sounds like for every student might be a little bit different, but I don't know if you guys have any comments about why we.
It just seems like it's kind of a personal thing that goes on, it's not something that needs to be spelled out by the board, like, we need to do this, and then this, and then this, really depending on the student and how many credits they're missing, and, you know, I know you've had personal experience with the.
Yeah, I had participated in one of those programs as an employee, and it resulted, it was, the situation was caused by the two-point-oh GPA requirement, which doesn't exist anymore. But I wondered with our requirement for twenty-two credits and only twenty-four opportunities, if we don't have students who get up to the end of senior year and are potentially close to not being able to graduate, and if having that committee process spelled out, so that a short-term remediation process could be spelled out for those students to still graduate could be beneficial.
Could it be more of a procedural thing versus a policy?
Yeah.
Right? In my mind, that seems to make more sense. Because of course, versus school board policy, we want to stick to it, right? That's what should guide us.
You know, in the past, have they had to have the twenty-two finished to walk? Apparently, they have to have all credits.
At the time of walking.
Okay, it's not that they can walk and not get their diploma until summer, so they have to have.
I think that's here.
Yeah.
Because some districts treat commencement as ceremonial, where they'll let them walk, but they have to have, then give their diploma. I mean, it's just, I've seen both ways. But here, they don't walk unless they have credits done.
I think sometimes it is put in as a policy to take the burden off of you guys from being held, and should somebody ask for special circumstances, this gives you something to look back to or reference.
One question that popped in my mind was, are there any other policies that necessitate the opportunity for remediation? And when I searched our other policies, this is the only policy that actually includes the word remediation. And I think that that's an important opportunity that actually looks like by statute needs to be offered to our students. So particularly that last paragraph of the remediation law for credit and grade point modification. I think we have to have something in there to say that we're meeting those statutes and that that opportunity is available to students. I don't know if it needs to be the exact language that's in there. And I guess I'm a little concerned about not having a specific process for students who don't meet requirements that the board can support for parents, because, you know, last year when the, when we were informed of the grade policy at the high school being changed mid-year, that was a result of students who were seniors and who were at risk of failing, and that there is no way for them to remediate those credits within their schedule. And raising our grading floor to a sixty percent so that kids can't fail, to me, is not a good option. I would rather see us have a remediation plan of some sort, that the students can make up their requirements, and we're not changing our grading to accommodate it. So there certainly might be updates to this that would be easier for staff to implement, and to know that then you have the board backing behind it. But I feel like they're two very essential pieces.
I don't know the timeline of all this, but do we have time, not now, tonight, obviously, but by the next reading or something to bring you kind of another version? I think, I'm not as familiar with the top one, so we can certainly take a look at that and have some discussion about how to kind of rework that. I know the, the bottom piece about the remediation, you know, I'd like maybe the three of us to do some additional research about what does that look and sound like in other places, because already this year, we're running into, you know, students that have come to us wanting to manipulate their schedule due to their GPA, and classes that are weighted and not weighted, and these are the kids that are in like our, you know, top five, top ten percent because of all the manipulation of class rank, and, I mean, it's crazy, some of the conversations that we're having with kids who want to use, and have found this part of the policy and highlighted it and brought it to me and said, hey, wait a minute, this says that I can drop my AP class and retake my Foods One class because of, I mean, it's, I, this has been a learning curve for me, that part of it, so I'm like, wait a minute, that's not the intent of that part of the policy, hey, you know? But they're like, well, this is what it says, it doesn't say that we can't do that. So if we could maybe, if we want to keep something for each section, if we could maybe have a little more time to do some research about like, what could that look like to maybe meet, meet us in the middle a little bit in terms of what's actually happening right now, and maybe rework some of that, and to reflect some of the things that are happening in the building, you know, some changes and things that are going on to, you know, more accurately reflect kind of what's happening right now, but.
No, this doesn't, there's no time limit on this, I mean.
Right.
We've been operating like this for a while.
Yeah.
So until you come with a, you know, a new version of it that board can support, I mean, if it's two weeks or four weeks.
Doesn't matter, okay.
We'll just take these policies and keep working on them until we, until we get them. They don't have to go as a bunch, so, I mean, we may pass five of those seven next time.
Well, I think reviewing a little bit more about that Wisconsin statute, because this part of the policy was just put in a couple of years ago, when we got rid of the two-point-oh. So that was not that long ago. So I don't know, of course, I don't personally know why that's connected to that state statute.
Well, maybe that statute speaks to something higher up in the policy.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Well, some of the back history, though, that I don't want to be overlooked, is I think it's really important that a teacher, if they really believe that student does deserve to bail, is not overwritten by either guidance or the principal, to allow that student to pass just so that they can get through class. If that teacher really believes that's the case, I think that teacher needs to be supported. And what I learned, and I think it was probably what caused some of these boards to get in there, is when I first came on the board, students were able to participate in sports, and I have mixed feelings on it now, but at the time, I felt very strongly that if they were an AP student, that we should not be saying, yes, go ahead, go play your baseball, your football, whatever you wanted to. They needed to have at least a D, and I think it should be a C, but that's me personally. I do see now, I have a little different stance, I've gained a few years of age. Kids sometimes need that athletic event or activity curriculum to want to come to school, and I recognize the value in that. But at the same time, I don't want us to discredit the teacher who wants to make that student accountable. So I, I know that that was part of what's caused this policy to go up and down, and there's been some wording changes, and maybe not the, I appreciated how you said what the intent was, and I'm very grateful that you're taking that into consideration.
Do we still have, speaking of Marie's, she said, do we still have a program for kids that aren't making the grade to still participate or in activities? You know, you know what we went through last year, with calling kids down on Friday, you know?
Oh, yeah, that doesn't occur.
I know that doesn't happen, but, thank you. Is there anything, you know, from that to now, is there anything in place right now that when kids aren't making the grade, what, what happens with their activities?
Well, a couple of things, so, you know, changing the intent of how we use homeroom has been helpful, and really trying to target those kids that we know need that extra assistance. In terms of grades that go out to activity advisors and coaches and such, you know, those grade checks go out on Mondays. If a student is failing, they're supposed to stay back from practice and make those connections with teachers, you know, kind of ahead of time, proactively. Hey, I need to come in today to finish this test, or whatever it might be, or get, you know, reteaching on this certain unit because maybe they didn't get it. So those things are supposed to be occurring. Is it perfect? No. Is it as tight as I'd like it? No, but it's kind of what we have at the moment, so. And I think some of these things too, will also, you know, we talked about the credits, you know, as we just kind of started the journey a couple of weeks ago of doing research regarding taking a look at a schedule change for next year. You know, I mean, I personally, I don't like the fact that we're offering the bare minimum amount of credits. At one point, actually, what we offered was below what DPI even suggested. You know, so that's a whole nother conversation, I get it, but it all kind of plays into this piece of like, building that support in during the day, because we know after school time is, is hard, and we want kids to be connected and participate, be able to do all those things, and right now, within a six-period day, there's, there's only so much time and opportunity, and it's hard, you know, but, but that's part of, one of the driving forces behind trying to research and find maybe a little bit different way to use our time, so.
Turk, are you looking at a new schedule, perhaps?
I would say almost a hundred percent, yes. So we just started, we've had a couple of meetings about it at the building level, we're just kind of starting that, the research phase, and.
So it's possible.
We'll keep you, we'll keep you posted, we're getting there.
That we can put on hold that whole grading policy portion of the tree.
We can't really put it on hold because we do need a policy in place.
It isn't, it is in place, it's just that if we want to change it.
So you would want to wait until they do that change? I think some of these changes should happen, though, won't you?
The grading policy?
No.
Just the portion of it?
Just this one right here that we were talking about, yeah. Some of those changes, I think, can be made, you know, within a couple of weeks of, you know, us bringing you some more information. It is possible this may have to be revisited once we make some of those other kind of bigger changes, for sure, but.
I hope we can offer more.
Well, and that's the feedback from staff too, you know, we kind of sat down, had a conversation the other day of like, what, let's talk about the why, of why are we even looking at offering a new schedule? Why would we do that, you know, we're kind of the pros and cons of our current schedule, and overwhelmingly, staff said we just, we want to offer our kids more opportunities, or just, you know, right now, kids have to choose between AP and ban, or, you know, I mean, it just, the list kind of goes on, so. Sorry, a bit of a tangent, but.
It's important.
Okay, so you guys have worked on that?
Yeah, yep.
Let's move along here, if we look at technology.
Thank you for the memo also, guys, and Chan, so it's very helpful.
I believe our technology people went through this also.
I thought it looked good.
I know we expect this to be changing quite frequently as technology changes.
Do we have district administrator guidelines for this one?
We don't have guidelines for any of them. Very, very few policies.
And does Neola have suggested district administrator guidelines also? Or not?
Not that I've been able to.
They will work with us on them.
They will work.
And this has been ongoing since we started working with Neola, because it's referenced many times in their policies.
If they had suggested ones, I think it would be easiest for you to, you'll see those and say, this is what we're going to do.
That's our next conversation with them.
Mark's got those.
It's gonna be that easy, but yeah.
One question that was posed is whether or not teachers would still be able to use Remind to communicate with students, based on the policy as it currently is, and what you think administrator guidelines might be, is that anything that would be a change at all, or still allowed to continue?
Is there a?
So Remind is an app that allows.
Are they using it now?
Yes. Some, some people are, some coaches and some teachers use it to send out reminders to their groups or to parents. And the advantage of it is that you aren't sharing your personal cell phone number with the group that you're communicating with, but yet you, people are getting the message on their cell phone where they most often are at. And the other benefit is that you have a record potentially of that communication that can be accessed, I believe.
We will look at you. Don't remind you of any.
I will sign up a reminder code just for you.
Oh, thanks. So you can give us another app.
Feel some of this, I'm wondering if we should include the board in some of the technology privacy, just because employers are school property. So we should apply that, some of the provisions on it, some of the stuff there's too.
Will the board's help to the same?
Well, it's a school property, it's schools' property, so I don't have any way to any privacy on this communication, technically.
I know we signed a document.
Right, and I don't know if it's reflected that it should be in this policy, it is what I'm asking, if it should potentially be in this, or maybe it's covered somewhere else under the board. Provisions of our units, or policies?
So you want to report, choose one of the staff members' rights to privacy, staff members and board members? Would that make it inclusive?
So zero, six, one. Zero, one, six, seven, point five. Starts kind of with use of email for board members. And then there is use of personal communication devices that lists, says that board members using devices should be in accordance with the following policies. And it's not lists, oh no, seven, five, point zero.
Can it look at all?
Nope. So we might want to.
That might solve right there, there's a seven, four, five, one there. Which one are you reading, which one are you?
Zero, one, six, seven, point seven.
Any other pieces in here? Again, if you still catch something over the next week or so, I mean, we still react to it, so it's not that we have to catch. Okay, so going down to academic excellence. Chan, you want to say anything about the GPA piece here?
I was just reviewing the policy, because I'm a senior counselor this year, and I've been looking at it, there was just a piece that talks about class rank policy that no longer exists as far as I could find. So that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, because it refers to a policy that doesn't exist anymore. The policy otherwise looks good to me. It's just that one chunk, that one sentence.
Break the class rank? Any other comments, questions?
Is there anywhere else where it spells out how GPA is calculated? Is that in the handbook?
Do you mean in reference to weighted classes, or what do you actually mean?
Well, yeah.
I know we've looked at that.
You know, I mean, this.
It is, so.
You know, I know that there's varying scales for colleges and schools, and for AP versus our scale.
I haven't seen the handbook.
I do too, I don't, no, I haven't seen it. I don't remember looking at it for this year, because I don't have a student.
Is there a section on the high school handbook?
I'm trying to remember. There's not one coming to the top of my brain right now, that it doesn't mean, that it doesn't exist.
I mean, it says in the policy after the sentence that's striked out, in selecting a scholarship recipient to act in. I mean, it says in the policy after the sentence that strikes out, in selecting a scholarship for significant academic excellence scholarship, weighted grades for seven semesters will use to compute grade point average. That doesn't spell out, like you want it more detailed than that?
Well, I just wonder if that class rank policy had it more detailed. And I don't know what the statutes that refer to here. I don't know if if by statute we need to spell out how we calculate GPA within board policy or if it can be done within the handbook.
It should just be in the handbook. Yeah, that would make sense.
I think it would be very helpful and then also that magnanimous how those are rewarded because that did raise some questions in the last year's budget.
If you'd want to apply that to the handbook, just in case the grand policies. Okay, well, you can figure that one out with the, see what you got there.
Yeah, well, in the handbook under academic recognition, there's a lot of information in there although I don't see that it's spelled out specifically. The calculation piece of it, is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, and it, um, breaks down the LAUDY scoring as well in the handbook.
Why don't you just massage that one a bit so you kind of get the gist of what we're doing here, taking on our policy and putting it in the handbook so you know what the concerns are. So if you can come back with that.
I know what you did address earlier for me this year or actually at the end of last year. Because it became very apparent that those that chose to be in the arts definitely were hindered under that whatever was used last year.
Yep.
I'm hopeful that you're rethinking then is actually playing out.
Yeah, so we have an updated LAUDY list and a brochure that that reflects those things, yep.
Um, would you guys be willing to review policy five four five one point oh two, technical excellence higher education scholarships? With this because that refers to grade point average also and.
What was it, five what?
It's five, five four five one point oh two, technical excellence higher education scholarships. Um, that one has some references to grade points at the end of it and, um, I would hope to see consistency between. All of them. Okay?
What to do on that one? Last one we got here. Governmental agencies. This is one that, uh, that I mentioned, uh, we'll get down. This, well, this is one that we use quite often. And this one, I think we run into a lot of conflict with our local enforcement. Am I correct? Yes, no? So it's something that, uh, whatever changes here, I'm going to have to sit down with them and say, you know, this is the way it is. Here as far as how we, you know, how they have access to kids and the procedural process because, uh, we've had some confrontations before that aren't, weren't good.
Kind of unlike the urgency of the matter and whether they should be talking to kids at home?
Well, it's, it's pretty spelled out right here, I mean, this is, I like this, but it's not what happens in reality at times. You know, it usually depends on, you know, the. Who feels it's at what level, you know, I mean, we need to be in control of what happens with the kids. And that's basically what our policy, that's not what happens at times, I mean, we get. They come, they come to order every once in a while and we have to be protective of the kids' rights and parents and what have you. So I don't think I'm speaking out of turn.
No, I, no, no, it's, it's just a frame of reference, you know, for what they consider imminent versus what we think is best for the child. With the big picture kind of thing, so that's.
Yeah, well, there's legality too as well, so interviewing myers under without consent, I mean, that's something that surfaced before. And then I don't know how many opportunities we have taken to speak for. Some law enforcement that doesn't seem to be syncing in. So I don't know what the corrective action is on that before we do get ourselves into any type of legality.
If there's no changes to this, I will sit down with them, I don't want what happened. We have a couple of instances last year that was not good.
Okay, well, in paragraph three, it says if the investigation focuses on a particular student as a crime suspect or crime, the administrator and the law enforcement officer shall abide by the guidelines, what guidelines? Are you talking the juvenile justice code?
Or?
There's, well, that's not a guideline. Um, what I'm saying. Those are statutes. And so that's what we mean in that sentence.
Well, constitutional rights.
Well, to me guideline would be from three on.
So would it be helpful to put something else in here if we do have situations and how do we address that? I don't know how I support, um.
Well, I think what we have here is good, it just has to be done that way and, you know, I have, I have to sit down with them. Insist on how this is going to happen. After we went through last year a couple of episodes, again, that's, I wasn't used to operating that way either. And it's just like, hey, you know, I'd hear afterwards, hey, this is, this happened or this is happening. You know, it's, we just all have to have an understanding, you know, regardless of, you know, if we have a principal out of the building or what have you. What's the process because that seems like when, you know, things happen, you know, when we don't have a direct line of, here's how, you know, here's the backups and what have you because they take upon themselves and say, oh, they get free reign now. And I think that was one of the issues that happened last year was when, you know.
And I think we're always looking at it from a lens of we want schools to be a safe place for these kids to be. We don't want it to be a place where they feel like they're being puffed out of class and questioned, you know. I think that's, you know, the lens that we take and try to explain, you know.
More than that, we work well with them, it's just there, there's some pieces here that, you know, bother me that, the procedural pieces in a couple of instances.
Especially if it didn't happen in the school, well, it's something that you are.
Well, and I think one of the issues is they basically say that's, those aren't the guidelines that they have to follow. And so what we want to make sure is that we're following the school board policies and so it, we're not, not agreeing as to what that looks like because they're saying we don't have to follow that.
Well, that's why I would recommend you put in there that they need to follow the juvenile justice code. Because, um, that gives them a reference rather than just some vague guidelines. And that pertains to whether they can.
Is that what you have in number three, Katie, did you put that in there, okay.
In B one it has, this procedure will not apply to certain sentences where a serious crime may be involved. What's a ser, that's, what's a serious crime?
Right.
Is the question.
Because we revert back to the.
Right, you can, you can, you know.
Personally, I think, I feel we need some time on this just to get a better sense of, because we have had these things that have come up. And I think personally I feel that it's just. Something we'd be a little conscious of and supporting people that are dealing with somebody that is in the school. I'm very, the support they need. And then like we have a policy that is shared with whatever organization it is, so this is a policy, it needs to be invited by. Um, so we're not having back and forth to say, well, we don't care what your policy says. I think we need to take a position that we're running the school district and not the local enforcement.
Well, we need to check that out.
Because we're going to be the ones that are going to be answering the questions.
Oh yeah, and we do, we, we are the ones on the line. And, you know, just a couple of situations is we're very intimidating to staff. Last year, the confrontations that we had, which don't need to happen, they shouldn't happen. And if we clear it up with policy, great, but I think it's going to be more of a conversation, etiquette and.
Well. I think it could be training for the officers. I mean, I had requested a copy of whatever contract we've written. So we can take a look, what types of training are they required to go to before they're, um, appointed to, to be the school liaison officer? I think that's important.
Typically SROs have training now with what we've had here.
Our current SRO was interviewed as for that position. That was, you know, we had some experience that way. I mean, Shannon and I just went to the Wisconsin Juvenile Resource Officers Convention with our resource officer. It was focused on mental health and building relationships with kids. Um, he said that was the first time I think that he'd ever gone to something like that. But it's really, it was, well, it was eye opening for the two of us as well, but really valuable training, I think. To get around other resource officers.
If we make sure they either have that training beforehand or get it shortly after. I think we should look at that in concrete language.
Dave, have you seen your contract or?
No, not yet, I told him it was in a three.
Is there a Javis Fisher or, or a police, police officer? How do we handle that?
That must be a little contract.
Those expectations on that.
Yeah, good point, yeah. Um, when Niola says that they want to help us craft administrative guidelines, does that mean that they sit down with you and have a conversation about what would go on them? Or does that mean that they have a document of suggested language for them?
I've always assumed that they had a framework for, for procedures, but we never got past. And this is further than that as far as reviewing and that, so the whole procedure piece is a.
I just wonder with some of these that the procedure part of it, um, would be important and, um, I think we would want to uphold that we're on the same page in supporting those. If it would be possible to kind of bring both forward at the same time. You know, for example, as I read about the parent leases, is the parent contacted first? Or is the police officer allowed to speak to them before contact has been made with the parent? You know, it talks about the student can request other, um, representation. Is the student made aware that they can request other representation?
That is a great point. In the attempts, I feel like they should at times approve that I, I did it. Here's my chance to be, I made these telephone calls or email and I had no response.
Yeah, and I've, it's happened both ways, some of the biggest things I've had to deal with in the past. We let the police come in and talk to them first before we did anything with parents. We had to just, you know, when stuff comes, certain things come down, you know, things change. You know, if they ever get to the bottom of things, if you can't. So I have to see where our legal footing is. Normally you'd like to have the parents there or what have you, I think most of the time you can. But, you know, even in this procedure here or policy, you know, talk about serious. Now, what is serious?
Maybe that would be a good question for legal guidance, this is our more descriptive language, like imminent danger. Physical threat that would, you know, be clearer than the word serious.
I just, you know, I just don't want our people to get put in a position we were put in last year. You know, it just wasn't appropriate.
It might be, well, I asked one of our ADA's to come in and, both of them could do the jury board if they. Talk to. Anybody who warrants or that. To clarify from their perspective.
It's an important one.
Yeah.
That's not a new one, this is.
Okay, we got our homework.
All right, nice work team on our first.
So lessons learned, we don't take more than three at a time. I'll sort of bring a procedure, try and, try and work procedures in at the same time, you know, then it might slow it down for a bit, but we'll see. Yeah, we haven't done it yet.
And I think some of them, just knowing that you've looked at them and you're comfortable with them. You know, I don't know that administrative guidelines are board approved, but at the same rate, it's challenging when we have a board policy that refers to administrative guidelines and we're aware that there aren't any. Whereas. When.
It's wide open.
You know, whereas some of these, um, high. I don't know, high focus ones, you know, potentially being able to be aware of them would be. Um, so are we ready to move on to filling a board vacancy?
Please.
All right, back to you, Mark.
Okay, uh, very simply, our policy is pretty clear. If we do have a board vacancy before the notice of elections file, uh, the board will appoint someone to fill up to the election, which would be in April. Uh, if a resignation comes in after the posting, then you fill for the remainder of the term. Uh, as, as the policy states here, anyone who does apply, you have ten or twenty, you have to interview. But that's, the process is determined by the board. In the past, they've had this and they've asked two questions, why and what's your qualifications? It's as simple as that, really, I mean, or you go resumes, you know, formal interview process or what have you. But again, you, as a board, make the choice on, on filling that seat. And personal, attorney of laws, if you said that for some reason you get into January, February and you just can't come up with anyone, uh, that would be an excuse to leave a vacant until the election because it's only a couple of months. But by the spirit of law, you have to make an attempt to fill it. Really hit on that.
Any questions, Duncan?
Okay.
Do you have a posting, um, ready to go when?
As far as an advertisement in that, I haven't, but I will take one, pull it up and, and it just, there's, you know, it's word of mouth, paper, electronically, I mean, we'll get the word out.
But there, I bet they have to live, just a suggestion, because last time we had a point about, we had like ten, or eight? Ten applicants and a body of them didn't live in the school district. There was a question we asked at the end.
Could pose a problem, okay, I'll make it out of that.
I think that was a down economy time. Four, three hours.
I'm making out of that one.
Just a suggestion.
Um, so board members, are you, if Mark sends out a draft, are you comfortable with him moving ahead with that?
Oh, yeah.
As soon as it's.
As soon as it's official, we, I think that's official, so.
So that may change tomorrow.
I've had intro, people coming in with interest or, I said, no, we'll hold your paper, but it's.
I have an eloquent letter.
I might have to hear that. There's not enough policies to have.
And a copy for Madam.
That was the way around it. Okay.
Um, so next on the top, on the agenda is programming to address equity and diversity. And our principals are going to start this one.
Yeah, I can go first?
Great.
Let's go.
Sounds awesome.
Perfect. All right, there we go. Actually, Sarah and I are working um, quite closely this year on developing our building goal and having a lot of discussions specifically with kind of our fifth through twelfth graders, you know, how we're, how we're addressing this and having some good, you know, own kind of principal PLC here, some things that we're doing in the building. But, um, I'll just kind of speak specifically for the high school. You know, in terms of how we're addressing some of these things and some of the data that we're using to really kind of zero in on what we feel to be some of the biggest focus areas in the building. And it kind of keeps coming down right now to, you know, kids having relationships in the building, feeling connected, feeling engaged, and ways that we're going to try to address that. You know, this year, I am not developing a building-wide academic goal. Um, all of our academic areas of both strength and areas of growth are being tackled within our PLCs. Um, so we're having conversations at the PLC level about that. Um, but in terms of building wide, um, those are the things we're focusing on. And we're going to use our data from um, our recently released report card, which I know you haven't seen yet, but um, to help identify some needs of our diverse populations. Um, using data from the YRBS survey. My wonderful counselors, I think we even have the binder with you, don't you? Have, yep, and I know Katie has been with them too. Uh, they've been. There you go, yes. All the wonderful counselors have been collecting some trend data from two thousand and ten until last year. Um, we are, we will take the YRBS again this spring, which would be nice to have some fresh data there. So, I know Sarah and her staff have been kind of analyzing the middle school portion of it. We've been looking at the high school portion of it. And again, trying to just pull out some of those really specific pieces of areas and I'll kind of touch on those in a second that we're looking at. Um, well, Sarah and I, as a part of our building goal and of our SOLO, have given our students the Gallup Student Survey, which really focuses on hope, student engagement, I think.
It's a tip, if you click on the link.
I was going to say, I think we gave that to you, so you can just take a look at it, it's like an information brochure. Yeah. So I know she and I are excited about getting that information as well, because it's a little bit different than YRBS. We should hopefully have it within the next, I would say, week and a half, two weeks or so. So, you know, we're a little bit behind the ball in terms of developing our SOLO and kind of finalizing it essentially, because we're waiting for that data. But I think that'll be some really good stuff. Um, you know, the other thing too, that we're talking constantly about is really kind of how do we get our kids and staff really to buy into and aware of our mission, which is to engage, to educate, to empower, and really understanding what those three words mean. I know at the high school, we're having a lot of discussions right now about how do we get kids kind of there. Um, you know, right now, we have our posters up and that's about all we've done. So we're really kind of kicking that into high gear as well. Um, you know, using our, our character ed time on Thursdays. So one of our homerooms, um, once a week is really focused specifically on character ed and fusing all of that into character ed as well. Um, you know, our genius hour, I think, plays into this beautifully as well. You know, some of the things, I know you're going to hear Sarah and Chris say these same things, but you know, administratively, attending our Leading for Equity series, completing equity audit. Sarah and I had youth frontiers come in, um, she did the courage retreat, we did the respect retreat. Um, she and I also had three screens come in at the beginning of the year, which is kind of an all encompassing, what did it cover? Bullying, um.
Difference in diver- it was.
Social media.
Social media pieces, overcoming obstacles.
Right, yeah, again, kind of that hope and engagement piece, so. Um, and I'm just going to go back to the YRBS for just a second. So Jenna and Katie, um, you know, specifically for the high school piece of it, did a great job kind of compiling and looking at some trend data so we can start to kind of zero in on what exactly we want to tackle, because they know we can't do it all just in one year. But from that information, you know, we've had a slight decline over the last couple of years regarding students really feeling like that they belong in our school. Um, that percentage kind of keeps going the wrong way right now. Not significant, but enough where we're kind of like, oh, let's maybe flag that a little bit and see how we can dig into that. Also, um, there's a specific question on there regarding if students feel like they have an adult in the building that they can talk to and trust, and if they have a problem. Um, in our last couple of years, we've been sitting at about seventy-five percent of our kids are like, yeah, I feel pretty, pretty good about that. But for us, it still leaves a really large percentage of kids that come to school every day and don't feel like they have someone that they have a connection with, that they could talk to if there's a problem. So, again, for us, that kind of goes back to that relationship piece and, again, how we're structuring homeroom and you know, some of those different things that we're trying to do this year, which really right now is probably a bigger focus building wide than our report card and our academic achievement and scores. We know, of course, those things are always going to be there, we're a public institution. We're always going to have to be accountable for making sure our kids are learning. But, um, right now, given, given the building, and I think there's still some healing going on in that building as well, so we're really trying to tackle that piece of it. So, you'll hear again, and I don't want to speak for you, but we'll hear, you'll hear from the two of us again, we kind of finalize our SOLO, waiting on that last piece of that data and then kind of dig into the work from that point. How much did I leave you? Probably not much.
Not a whole lot. It's okay. We also, that, that, the, the relationship piece, the engagement piece, as a staff this year, um, our middle school staff is reading um, a book called Lost and Found, to work on building better relationships with kids who are behaviorally challenged. That was a big struggle for us last year. Um, we had a lot of really significant behaviors out of kids and, um, so we as a group are working on that. Deals with language and how we can look at the skills they're missing versus um, just saying they just don't know how to behave. Because that's often our answer to behavior and acceptance is that they just don't know how to do it. Well, how can we teach them how, the same way we would teach them how to do reading or math. So we're working through that, um, a goal. Initially, we were going to take most of the year, people are very excited. I've got a lot of professional practice goals built around the language in there and hopefully, we're going to be done with the book by January, so that's also a part of our piece. Our circle time every Wednesday, uh, that was a big change for us last year, putting that in. And, you know, I have several teachers who say that's that one time that kids are always on time at the bell every week. Like, they can't wait for that time to make that connection. We have kids six, eight, in groups of thirteen or fewer with one adult every Wednesday. Um, fifth grade keeps them in homerooms, they travel, so they're a little bit bigger, but those are the teachers they're connected with. And, um, this year, um, you know, as part of our, you know, we started our bully awareness in October. Kate and Amy are doing some really nice work with microaggressions and getting kids to understand what those are, which leads right into some of you are looking at me like, you don't know what a microaggression is, which is exactly my response when Kate said, hey, do you know what a microaggression is? No, um, it's those little internal biases that we have that we're not even aware of. Um, so teaching kids how to recognize what those are. The work that they're starting to do this year, working on those engagements and relationships. Yeah, the youth frontier retreat, I just want to say, was really powerful for my seventh graders. It was one of the coolest um, end of the days of, of that retreat that I've seen. The kids coming together and apologizing and recognizing. And then the equity audit was um, quite eye opening. You learn a lot when you go through that, and that's something we're just finishing up right now. We're going to do um, some work with it on Wednesday when we travel to Waukele for part two of the Leading for Equity series, so. Much more to come, but Shannon said a lot, so I didn't have to say as much, thank you.
And the old frontier. So some of it is the same, um, the Learning for Equity series, same thing, I would say very eye opening as well, and I haven't finished the edit, just going through it, but it's some very um, good edits and things we knew that we did with good intentions, but didn't realize it. And so that's, that's been a good thing for us. Uh, we did the Unity Day this fall, each year, Bobby, Julie, our counselors, so a little bit different kind of thing with it, and I think this is probably the best one yet, even though each year the, each year I say that. So, I really need the impact that it had on, on some students. We also built upon that and had a presenter come in, the Ned Show, which is why we were selling those yo-yos. If you have kids in your building, we were selling yo-yos, uh, the assembly was free if we sold the yo-yos. And essentially, actually, it was free because someone else sold yo-yos and we're selling yo-yos and someone else got the assembly for free. But really nice kindness inclusion that kind of used yo-yos as their mechanism to engage the students. So really a neat assembly there. We use a different survey that's a little more appropriate for our population, that Bobby, Julie use each fall, spring health assessment survey. And it's, it's interesting in the data comes out of it each year, and kind of that's what they often build their, their goals and we build our goals from and improvement in terms of kids, you know, bullying is one that we've worked on a lot each year, the education of what that term means. It's probably one of the most um, inappropriately used terms at times. And so educating in what it means and how to prevent it, and that's a big piece of what happens here in the fall with Unity Day as well. Another piece that, that we're doing a lot of kind of our roll up this year, because our school SOLO is on writing. So, that was the year that we felt that these are our state test scores that we really needed the most worked on. And so, something that's a little bit different than our building work on is with our Spartan Way PBIS, is adding tier two this year. Um, and so just at our next staff meeting on the fifteenth, we're rolling that out with the staff and what that looks like. And that'll include a piece called, um, the first step of, of tier two is check-in, check-out. And that's all about kids building relationship with a staff member before and after school, or beginning and the end of the day. Um, and it's a short one, but can be very helpful for those kids to build a positive relationship with a staff member. And so that's, it starts as actually data intervention, but if we need to keep going, it kind of serves also as a progress monitoring tool. So it's really a neat thing that we're very excited about. And that's, we just finished our second of a four-day training in that last week, and so we've been meeting our tier two to a lot, getting that ready to go. Also, this year, we've added some new acknowledgements to our tier one system to really try to promote um, some positive behavior through our students there, and we've really been happy with the progress so far and how that's, you know, helped engage some students who hadn't previously. Yes, did some different things. We learned that what we were doing before worked really well for our K one, two students, not as much for our three, four. So really tried some different things with them this year, so happy with how those um, are going. So that is kind of what I have. We are doing a lot of work with staff, not yet with students, on engage, educate, empower, on what that means for us. Now, we're starting to work through a new schedule for next year two and really, all right, how does that help us with those three things? We're looking at that, we're looking at maybe the decisions to make. And I'd say for some, that's how they did it, for others, you know, well, you're right. So it's, it's been very helpful to have that guide for us. In three words, and I can remember three words. Any questions?
Hey, I have just one, I really am glad to hear, and I think each of you said it, I'm not sure I heard from you, Shannon, I'm sorry if I said that, I just missed it. But particularly establishing those relationships, what size groups are they with the kids? Or you said it's check-in, check-out?
One.
One adult, but I mean, one adult has how many students? One, one?
So it's, check-in, check-out is, is meant to be an individual thing. So if you've, sometimes they're called different things, but.
But are there seven hundred adults in the elementary school that, that's what I mean?
So.
One at a time.
Yeah.
That idea.
The way it is, is so, we have a tiered system. So tier one, you know, isn't for every student. And tier two, students who qualify for that based on many criteria, one is their ODRs, the behavior slips that they're getting. And so not everybody goes to tier two and has that individual, um, that check-in, check-out. And so what we're looking at doing is adults who will get trained and who can do that. And then like, one adult may have two kids at the check-in and check-out.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm disappointed then, for only one reason.
Sure.
The quiet one who's never a problem, probably needs that one-on-one.
Right, and that's what we're, that's what we're working on, I would say, for later in this year, is how, because it's, it's easy to pick up the behavior kids. So we're starting with that data. We're working on some other tools and what we can use and how to identify that. One is using the.
Sabers?
Sabers potentially, we're letting you guys start with that.
Yep. They don't. Smaller.
Yep, and then potentially use that to help identify kids, so.
Because they're the ones that I believe are the ones who suffer the most.
Yep.
Because they keep it all inside.
Yep.
And so to hear that there's a teacher, that I saw it on the web on a YouTube thing, but I also heard from Wayne Dyer, where that teacher mentions in the world to that one student, and I, I think that's a beautiful way of it. She revisited how she's teaching and not thinking of it as teaching anymore, she thought of it as building relationships. And so it's, and we know we're focusing on that. So defining bullying to me is biggie, because a snarky little girl may not call that bullying, but that can be very intentionally, and then it's the quiet little girl that's most hurt by it, who's not going to say anything. So are they going to get, are they going to get attention? And I don't mean little girl, little boy, whatever, I'm saying little girl, but I'm glad we're looking at that.
And can I just ask, um, are there plans happening now for NOK Day two? Should we be, because I thought we were going to have.
We're looking at, kind of kind of all district. This component, we will have something in place.
I'm wondering as, maybe as community ed gets rolling, um, what we can do to engage parents in, in learning. I think as a parent, the definition that the school uses for bullying and how you differentiate between is very powerful and I would like to learn what microaggressions are.
What else?
And I, the Lost and Found, uh, he also wrote a book aimed at parents called Raising Human Beings. So that might be a way to engage parents in the thinking behind that also, um, to offer a book study for parents on that same thought line.
Shannon, when you said you found twenty-five percent, didn't feel like having a, that to me is a huge number. So is it such where you've taken, that was the YouTube one that just went around where they had a banners all the way around the wall and they marked up who they knew and who they didn't know?
Oh, you said that, that middle school?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it was middle school or high school, and to me, it really shouldn't make a difference.
It doesn't really.
Do we know which kids are maybe, and is that a really, to me, it was a very visible way of seeing, okay, nobody really knows this child, somebody needs to.
Yeah. Sitting here this second, no, but that may be an action step behind, once we kind of finalize what our goal is, then we need to kind of get those benchmarks behind. Whatever we're going to set our goal at, how are we going to get there, something exactly like that, could be an action step that we do as a staff.
That seems really powerful and very visual and, you know, really mark on me, I thought.
Any other questions? Thank you for all the work you're doing. You know, that's, uh, lots of other data points, um, and running around putting out flyers.
That's why we're good.
Hardly work on these things, so thank you. So Chris, you have some strategic plan, or outcomes?
I do? I can't wait. I'll let the crowd clear.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Um, now you do have this presentation linked, I think, to your, I think, awesome, okay. So, a little bit of background, uh, so last um, spring, when you gave us those three days at the end of the year, we were putting the different teams, you know, the learning team and the, you know, the various ones, community engagement. And so I was on measurement team, which was a smaller team, but the brain power in that room was, was fascinating. Really enjoyed it, you know, once we kind of wrapped our head around, because it was very different, the other four groups had a very, you know, their title determines, you know, it was pretty clear what they were doing, community engagement. Ours, measurement, it took us a while to kind of wrap our heads around how to do our task. Um, but once we did, just an excellent group who did. So, some of you have heard this before, right? Who are on the, the core team have heard this, I apologize, you've kind of heard it again. So what our team did is we created, we did two things. First, um, the measuring rubrics to measure the learner outcomes. So the learner outcomes were determined by the core team, um, which some of you sat on. We determined the measuring rubrics and how we'd measure those, and then we made five result statements and action plans. Okay? Didn't stop me at any point. Uh, so these are the learner outcomes that the core team made, okay? So by two thousand and twenty-two, all learners will, through self-discovery, continually identify their desired future, recognize and adapt to new opportunities and create steps to attain their goals. And by two thousand and twenty-two, all learners will demonstrate global awareness and engage in diverse opportunities to positively impact their communities. And so then we broke it down into the five um, kind of categories that we saw, plan, respond, act, awareness, and impact. Color quoted, so we kind of could, you know, read through it a little bit easier. And that made our next, next task a little easier. So this is um, the rubric that was created, and I don't want to take a ton of credit of really good minds, Charlie did a great job kind of guiding us through this piece of it. So learner outcome rubrics. So learner outcome one, you have the, the statement there, put it into four areas of the rubrics, so dependent, emerging, independent, and visionary. And then broke it into those five, or three for the first and two for the second, um, learner outcomes. And so, as you kind of read through it, if they had a, at first, and I'll show you next year, um, this might actually help a little bit. So that's where it actually is, and if you have it, you can go back to it. This is really a nice way to visualize. And so analogies, dependent, you know, you got your, your horse and buggy, emerging, move into the, you know, kind of the first car, crank car, you can't see the crank in the back, but that's what it. Emerging, move into the, you know, kind of the first car, crank car. You can't see the crank in the back, but that's what it is. Independent, moving to the car. And then, you know, the visionary, the practice that we did had George Clooney on it, you know? And so the visionary, we get the spaceship, same one there, pushing a stroller, you know, trading whales, bike, went into Tour de France. So thought that kind of encompassed what we were trying to do here, um, in making this. And so from there, we have four focus areas and five result statements. And what do we then do with this information? We, over three days, and actually we had to meet a little bit ahead of time, you know, approximately five days, we've made this, then what do we do about it? So result statement's one, all employees understand the learner outcomes in the rubric and why they're important to each learner's success. So if you don't know about it, you can't do anything with it. And so, and I would say we put just as much, I feel there should be just as much emphasis on this part. They understand why they're important. Now, that's just another rubric, um, but why kiddos need to go through this. And it was really good conversation with the teachers in the room, um, about, you know, you have some kids who really do some amazing and really brilliant minds who are very dependent in certain ways. And even the ones who are parents in there, especially you have older kids and me talked a lot about, yeah, I really wish my kiddo was over here. And even if nothing else, their awareness. Cause when you have that awareness as a student, you know, as a person, you can do a lot more with it. Um, result statement two, students, parents and community understand the learner outcomes and why they're important to each learner's success. So I'm branching it out just past staff, uh, to our other big stakeholders. Result statement three, the district implemented and maintains methods for gathering and communicating information on learner progress towards learner outcomes. So, and this is a piece that we're kind of actually already working on, but having a way of storing that information. So for us, illuminate would be a really good tool on how to store, um, information centrally across campus. Result statements four, learner outcome rubrics are used to measure learner status. We've educated people on it, using them. And then five, um, decisions and collaborative efforts are continuously guided by learner progress towards learner outcomes. So using that information as a formative assessment and towards what do we need to do with it? You know, think about how that information would help you as a teacher, knowing what kind of a makeup you have in your class and where the kiddos are in those rubrics. So I call them all kiddos in my level of kiddos. But, um, so that's, that's what we did. Uh, Dr. Music asked for ten minutes. So if you want any more specifics, I can go in depth on pieces of it. But that's essentially our three days work, uh, that we did. No timelines on those pieces yet, but I would say certainly want to, you know, this, we actually have a, a structure that's embedded in place cause that's helping towards multiple aspects of our strategic plan. But I think starting to educate people would be the first step when we get there.
Actually, number one is one of our ten results that we're working on this year. And plus each result, remember you'll look in your piece that is an action plan, you know, what's prescribed steps of how we're going to accomplish this.
Well, that's where, that's where I was, that's what I was going to ask about because I, yeah. In measurement, I thought it would be, okay, because of how you're going to measure it, it was, but I don't see it. So I got confused.
Did Charlie take you through the four, three, two, one? The, how we rate the, how we rank the results? Did measurement work on that?
No. So we, the core team measures the other strategies. Ours was how we measure the learner outcomes. And so that's, that was kind of the first day Charlie just tried to educate us on that piece of it.
Okay. There's another grid that I'll bring out for you. And I don't know if it's in our packet, uh, how we rank the results. You know, so, so all the work, the ten that we have on the table, we'll gather all the data on those. We'll take it to the core planning team in March or April or May. And so here's what we've done. And then there's a rubric that they hold as a filter that they look at the work we've done and hold up gets that filter in. It'll either be, yes, we've met it, uh, we need a little bit more work or no, we haven't. You know, we just need, it's a multi-year goal or result, what have you. And I don't think that's in the book there yet because we haven't gotten to that stage, but I have it already. And that'll, I think, clear up your question.
I mean, this is a lot of work. This is awesome.
Yeah, we're very happy with.
You know, those three days were, I think they were priceless in moving this forward.
Well, and I mean, not only the minds that made it, but then the buy-in that already exists behind it. Uh, cause each building, you know, majority of teams and maybe you had support staff, teachers all working on it. So it was, it was incredible. Anything else?
Thanks, Chris.
Yep, so.
So the reason that, that we were bringing this forward to the board also, just so you know, is that that was part of the action steps of one of the results that were picked this year. And I'm sure it will continue to come, that particular rubric back to the board as it's communicated with families and with, um, starting to be used with students and sort and things like that. So it's something that we'll see a lot of over the next five years. And I think you made a great point, Chris, with the why. And, and I think, I remember the board kind of asking us previously too, that maybe when we're initially introduced to the results for the year, if we can just have a brief, I don't, I don't think we need to go deep into the research, but as a board member, it would be good to be able to sort of why briefly, we have these result statements when we're asked about them.
Why we have the ones we.
Yeah. You know, I mean, I, cause the teams did some really deep research about, you know, what's effective in education and why they chose those result statements. Um, so if that could be summed up into some talking points for the board.
Oh, okay. I thought we went through that already.
Why they chose them.
Cause that's a presentation I made of the welcome back to us, why. And, and the results that are chosen are really decided by myself and the cabinet based on, you know, budget impact and what have you. Cause now for next year, you know, again, strategic plans really drive our budgeting. And what initiatives are we taking on? What kind of money do we need to make those things happen? So that should be part of these budgeting presentations too, looking ahead and saying, you know, where we're going.
Some tend to be building blocks too.
What's that?
Some tend to be essential building blocks to other aspects.
Yeah. And you know, why you took ten, because there's, there's some wording included there.
Thank you. It's exciting to see all the work that's being done.
Yeah.
It was, it was neat for me because some of those people I work very closely with at the daily basis, some I don't. So it's really neat to get to see how they work and get to know them. And some pretty good assets we have in our district.
That's the toughest group, the measurement group, isn't it? Seriously, that's the toughest one to get your hands around.
Yeah. Hey, Chris, how do you want to lead the measurement group? That'd be great, Mark.
I don't think it was like that. I think it was, Chris, you're leading the measurement.
I had a good purchase made you look good.
That's a collaborative nature.
Well, and I really appreciate your responsibility, Mark and Chris, of that group because they did struggle wrapping their minds around it.
Oh, gosh.
And the way that you guys adapted and kind of brought in some more training for them to help them, uh, move forward with it was.
Well, it's such an abstract, I mean, there's so many, for a person in the group, we had a different definition. And that was our first day. I mean, you talk about walks you can run, was we went so slow to try to get aligned what we were doing. And then, then we could really sprint once we had a common focus in the room and understanding of what we need to accomplish. So it was good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dave, you snuck in the back door. Been waiting so patiently.
Yeah. So, um, I, I sent Tasia a list. Tasia, thank you for putting it in memo format. Of the departments, uh, or areas that we came up with in discussion at admin and the timing. So you can see buildings and grounds will be the first in December. Being that that's the fir-, the first one, um, you know, it may be that we circle back and talk about that one again because it is, it, it's really an all encompassing, uh, district-wide area of expenditure. We're looking at strategic plan stuff that may, you know, evolve as the year goes on. It's just, it's a really big one. It is the first one. And so I'll be working with George on it. George will kind of present. And I talked to him already, so he's raring to go. But just that, this may be a learning by doing thing because obviously it's brand new. This is our tentative plan right now, and we may touch on things more than once. So tentatively, buildings and grounds first. In January, we're looking at, uh, the two areas that Trish supervises essentially. So CIA and IT. These are also big, both big, uh, areas, big implications for what we do as a district. Big support, uh, network for IT. February athletics and activities, um, and then March, uh, all three buildings briefly, uh, and then people services, uh, as well. So that's our tentative list. I was going to ask if you're interested in, uh, having a revenue breakout. Generally, you hear a lot about revenue because the vast majority of our revenue comes from state aid or tax through the revenue limit, which I talked about. Uh, but if you'd like to hear more, I can put that on, uh, as well, either within one of these or, uh, maybe April or something. Or if you have any other thoughts, I'd like to hear them.
Is it fund eighty that's community?
Yes.
And would that fall in with the athletics and activities or would that be something that'd be separate?
These are all, um, I guess I had envisioned just general fund. If you'd like, we're something, community ed. I mean, they, I guess, I'd have to talk to Renee, you know, she's, as she said, it's been delayed. And so obviously this is, you know, she's still kind of working on it and figuring it out. That will obviously come into play into what to expect for next year. But it won't impact our general fund for next year. So.
I think an explanation just of how that fund works and how we're looking at using it for community ed. Since that's, you know, I envision community ed being a big, you know, having a big presence. And I think maybe just some understanding of how, what's there and how it works and.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. There's, there's no interaction between the general fund and the community fund. You know, we can let it separate for community ed. We probably won't need to. So. Uh, nonetheless, I think maybe, you know, budget could be just part of a presentation by Renee about community ed.
Your topic on tonight's agenda was my favorite because it was only four lines. That's so awesome.
You said, Mark, can't you handle that? Can't you take it? No, they like you, Dave.
How about donations, Dave? Where is that addressed somewhere here in one of the topics that you already have suggested?
No, I guess if you can elaborate on what you're, what you're asking.
Um, I'm just wondering how much we receive in donations, you know, how they're processed, what the procedures are, what accounts they go into.
So, um, probably the, probably one of the, you know, fund twenty-one is for fundraising and donations. I think the vast majority of that is fundraising. Donations, the procedure is that if it's over two hundred fifty dollars, uh, as a cash donation or in value, that they, the building administrator notifies me and I send out the official thank you. And then that goes on the, uh, the consent agenda for the board. Uh, because the letter that I send out, uh, has the tax statements within it saying, you received nothing of value in return. I guess we break down what it's looked like previously. If there's, if you're looking for like a fundraising discussion, that might be part of athletics and activities. But we can talk about that admin as well and see if there's, uh, specific areas that the administrators are, are looking at or thinking about.
I think there was, I don't know if I made a comment to that, but there are some issues with fundraising we need to talk about. And, you know, fundraising and donations and all that is a good discussion to have because, you know, you always run into glitches here and there. Issues of how they're handled or processed or, uh, what have you. So we just need to make sure, just to protect our own people, you know, how the process is or that money filters through, uh, what have you. Cause so we's in trouble, you know, if it's mishandled. And you know, right now we're on, I can't remember if I mentioned this in my commentary there, that we, we got some issues with individual classrooms going out and asking. Did I, did I mention that? Am I not? Okay. Uh, I think we talked about a cabinet, uh, that we've got issues with, you know. For the most part, we know who's asking for what, but when individual staff go out and bring something in, I guess what I'm getting from the chamber and that is certain businesses are getting hit up all the time. And, you know, I don't know if it is, uh, process that we've used in the past, where I've been, is that all fundraisers, uh, what have you, uh, gets brought to the, get brought to the building administrator. And then that comes to the board for approval in the fall, you know, like one of our first meetings, uh, in September, October said. So we know, just have a general idea, what kind of fundraisers are going on and it's approved by the board. Because, you know, it's, it's that whole surprise that we don't want someone coming complaining because they get hit up for this. We know nothing about it. So it's just a procedural thing that keeps everybody in the loop. And so, and granted, yeah, people have to think out a little bit on what they're going to do and plan it out. But at least there's a record of, you know, what's, what's happening, happening. Those are the kind of things you get caught off guard with that are embarrassing at times when you don't know what's going on. And all of a sudden someone's asking for some, or somebody receives something that.
And that would ensure that they get official recognition from us as well.
It's the music man thing. Cause we don't need the violins.
What are your thoughts, Mark, on donors choose and things like that?
On what?
Donors choose and websites like that. Like some of our teachers have, um, asked for funding on a website like that for furniture for their classrooms or for things like that. And.
Yeah, I, you know, I really dove into that, you know, and as long as we have an awareness of what's going on out there. And cause you just want to go and put you guys in a bad spot.
We talk to like colleges and universities, we'll have school of engineering, the school of music, and then parents can donate to each. You know, so a lot of schools websites.
It's like some kind of GoFundMe page.
Donation page, you know, up to a certain amount, they get recognized or I want this completely anonymous or. So if you're, but like a GoFundMe here, I think you're.
Yeah.
You need to.
Those donations should, you know, those types of donations need to come through the district rather than individuals.
Yeah. Cause I know, we've bought, or should we, donors have bought pieces of technology and pieces of furniture, um, specifically for classrooms in our district. And I don't know that we fully understand how many of our teachers are doing that.
And again, we don't want to discourage it, but we want to be able to, and I don't want, I hate to use the word control, but just put some order to it. So, you know, we don't want to get caught off guard.
I think it'd be good to have that somewhere on our, our website. So number one, it's awareness. Number two, people can see it and go, oh, well, I can donate. A lot of things I'd like to donate too, but I just end up buying the same frozen cookie dough and pizza. It's expensive. And that's true. Two, two months down the line, here comes the next.
Um, any other questions for Dave about the budget timeline?
New process.
Yeah. I think that's part of our calendar.
Yes. Thank you for, uh, being willing to lead the learning by doing. Truly. We're all going to be learning as we go through this process. And I'm very excited to get started on it. So thank you.
Uh, for those next two, I think I'm going to excuse myself just because it's appropriate for you to have a discussion about me. So. Sorry?
Okay.
Um, so. Thanks, Dave. Item ten is, um, our board of education goals for two thousand seventeen eighteen. Um, so during our summer retreats this summer, um, we had identified the wish to, um, establish two, two goals. One of our relationships, thank you, Dave, and one our own accountability. Then we, uh, looked at a format similar to Mark's, uh, template that he uses for educator effectiveness, but written towards our needs. Uh, then we had our retreat with administrators that we split up into two separate groups to look at those two. And, um, I think learned a lot from each other and learned a lot, learned that there was a lot of overlap in the conversations between both. And so then I asked the board how we'd like to move forward and suggested that Mark and I hammer out a template to be able to start a conversation about having a singular goal for us. Um, so Mark and I met a week ago and around last weekend. And I think Mark summed it up very well in his memo that, um, this is just a starting spot. And it has to be something that the full board, um, buys into and supports and is committed to, um, to the effect of. So, um, what are your thoughts?
I did appreciate that you presented that, Mark, in years. I think it's a fine place to start. I just, I do appreciate acknowledging that, you know, we, for us to feel ownership, we need to be part of determining what that goal will be.
So what'd you think up there?
I'm fine with that goal.
Yeah, I really thank you for, for putting all the time into it, too. It's so nice. My only line, I guess, was when I looked at the, under the measures and strategies, I was at the eleven, you know, under the implementation strategies. And I found that a little scary. So.
Which one?
Implementation strategies.
Under the measures and strategies. Yeah, which one?
Which one?
I'm actually referring to one, not a scary. Number is one, the eleven.
No, I mean, I, so, I felt better then when I kept going down and noticed that we are, it would be great if we collaborated with the district administrator and administrative team on the development and implementation of the annual schedule. Because that's what exactly what I was thinking when I was reading those other things, was well, we should all be working together so that we get our, it's much easier to do a schedule for the year if, if we're all just giving the information and kind of putting it together. So then I felt a little better, but I wanted to cry when I hit the eleven, I'm just saying.
It is an odd, an interesting format that the expected goal completion and annual benchmarks are above those strategies. But if you look up in the timeline section.
Yeah.
Of those strategies, how do you feel about, you know, full implementation of dates by July of this year? Collaborating with the administrative team to create the schedule.
I thought those were all very reasonable. I was, I'm just talking about myself. I was good with those.
Brian, what do you think?
I think, I think you guys have put a lot of work into this. We've talked about a lot of this stuff along the way here, and it's well mapped out, so I was very happy with everything, I think very well.
Other pieces?
Where did this come from?
The one that's, that's a real, we did a board study on that one, a jigsaw with it. And there's some really neat activities in there that, again, it's just awareness, and same with the other book I got you. It's a, giving it to my administrators, too. It's a decision-making model. It makes, you know, to think out, you know, lessen the fear of change, so to speak.
And Mark and I did talk about that since we have gotten other books on trust. And some of us saw the author of the eight pillars of trust at the WASB convention last year. But the thin book of trust is written in a way that's much more actionable than the eight pillars of trust was. And it also aligns with the DISC assessment. So that, the assessment that we would be taking to learn about each other's thinking processes, then this book with really some actionable pieces about trust aligns up with those two. So that's why we suggested that, but we did think to ourselves, oh, do we really want to get another book for the board? We did have that conversation.
We encourage lifelong learning.
I didn't read the other two, so. I'll read this one. It's on me.
It drew my heart.
I have to do it. I have to do it.
Are there any action steps that, or activities that you had thought of that you wanted to have the board or the board and the administrative team do to work towards improving trust and accountability that aren't reflected in here? Because as, certainly is not an, uh, in the entirety of what we could do, there's many other options for how we could work to build trust or increase accountability.
I think we need to step outside of this.
Yeah.
With them and, and to kind of get down to the trusting them, each other as people and not because of who you are, type of thing.
Mark agreed, which is why number one is plan and participate in bi-annual district social events.
I didn't really know what that meant. I just.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was like, if it was still going to be a, we're still in our, you know.
His idea is to host a Christmas, a district Christmas event. And wondered if the board would be interested in, in contributing to providing appetizers.
I can do that.
Well, this is, we did this up at the previous hall, this was up there we had, you know, it's about twice the size of the district here. But we, I get my principals, administrative team and board together, and everyone threw in some dollars. And we provided, we got the Elks Hall for nothing, and they had a cash bar, but we provided all the appetizers for all district evening, you know, like four o'clock on and, you know, probably went for a few hours. Just for a holiday gathering. It was just a nice time to, it was always packed. We, someone would play music or provide music for us, and it was good. And I thought, maybe we'd do that here, you know, probably the only place we could do it is Down the River down there. So, and then talk with them and just see what, you know, it was for.
Legion.
Legion.
I don't know, do you think Legion would be big enough?
Yeah.
We like closely interact with each other.
What's that?
We'd, we'd be able to closely interact with each other, but yeah, they host weddings and.
Big one.
Oh, yeah.
Have you been in theirs?
Well, just that room off to the right.
It has six.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't think it was, that was very big, you know. You've got, you know, you have 300-some employees and you probably, you know, you won't get that many, but.
No.
You know, you're probably going to get 150, 200, you know, something right after work, you know.
I think Brian's host.
Brian?
Yeah.
Oh, we'll set up a schedule. A's come like three to three thirty, B's come for four to four. Perfect. Anyway, just something like that. I thought would be a nice district.
Because I think it's about the same size.
You know, kind of thing, little appreciation thing.
Not just a bar or cafe, but also, that's about the same size, maybe even a little bigger than Down the River.
Well, we know that place seats 400 down there, Down the River, yeah.
Inside?
Yeah.
So are you talking before, all the degree?
Yeah, sometime, depending when we get it, hopefully sometime early December, mid-December. Yeah, we'll see when we can get it.
Okay.
I have to find out just, you know, what their chart was, but they've always been very good. You know, we knew there was a, some event here that everyone was going to go somewhere. They'd, you know, open up early or whatever, so. But again, it's just a.
I'm hearing consensus that there's support for that. I just noticed that in the timeline, Mark and I didn't notate when we might do some training on Robert's Rules of Order or do the books today on Key Word to School Boards. Is that something that we'd be interested in trying to do before July of 2018?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, the current format is there are consensus to bring it forward for approval at our November regular session and then start scheduling some topics during our work sessions?
Great.
Yes.
Thank you guys for doing that. We eat eggs.
No more pancakes. Those are chocolate chips on them. It's your fault, too.
No, you agreed to that. So, we're onto the ones around the table. Start with Brian. Are there any topics that you'd like to see? Add it to some future agendas?
No, not just that.
Katie?
Yes. Bridge the, yeah. What's it called? I would like an update on the implementation of the assessment software that we, with district-wide that we talked about.
Oh, FastBridge?
FastBridge, yes. Thank you.
What was that?
FastBridge. It's like a student assessment. And I have some issues.
I'll get all the ins and outs of that. I'll put a note out and then still put it on our agenda.
Well, yeah, and I'm thinking if you want to invite the developer to come back to the board, that would.
You can't get him to talk to us, we don't want to get him here.
If he wants to come to a board, that would be fine.
I'll just have that invitation.
Yes, please do.
Once he gets here, we're going to chain him up here.
Maybe we can arrange for him not to be able to leave. Just kidding.
Maria, is there anything you'd like to see?
Not anything in addition to, there's actually quite a few already going, so I'm thinking we're going to have to start going focusing for the prioritization place. And I do hope if we do that social event, that we move around, I think that'd be really beneficial.
Good idea.
Courtney?
I know Patty was interested in seeing the trend data for YRBS.
Sounds like they're putting all that together as well.
And I heard several references to building goals today. Typically, have, in previous districts, have you had the building goals presented to the board?
This is, you know, I'm still trying to get used to this timing and format here. Typically, in my past life, you know, they've all been discussed in the spring and put in concrete after workshop, because that's where they spend time. But again, it's all on timing of test data and things like that, so it's, I'm trying to get used to that here. It's, you know, if you don't have the right data, you know, and across the river, you're always dealing with year-old data. And that's why you can do it early, you know, here you're dealing with, you know, hot, fresh.
That's interesting. So they are year-old data, so.
Yeah. Yeah, because we didn't, you know, we, we started our, our goals for the following year in the spring. And then, you know, so we know what we're going to work on in the following, following year. And then we solidified them during the workshop time before school, and they were, boom, so you hit the round line, and here's what we got. We were never developing anything through the, so the timing is a little different from here. Just done, kind of like, hmm, we're a third of the way through, and we're defining our goals for the year. It's just a sequence for me, but that's, you know.
Well, in reference.
Believe me, I can change. We'll need a system to change for me.
Well, in reference to your, one, one of the books that you gave us, they have many things on that plate. They keep the balls rolling, sure.
You know, and one thing you have to keep remembering is that, you know, with this educator effectiveness and some of these other programs in Wisconsin, what it's the same thing we had, is the role of the principals changed. You know, they're not, they don't have time to be the 24/7 disciplinarian and things like that. I mean, they're, they have to be an educational leader now if they're going to do it right. And again, that's, there's different duties now, and this is, you know, it's changed a lot over the years. So, again, that's, you know, when they're at training, if they're, they're not in the building or what have you, you know, they're busy. They're, you know, and then every once in a while, someone does get sick.
Yeah, I just see it as an opportunity to communicate what they are working towards and the why.
And that's why that portion of the Friday notes that we're putting out now, you'll get a little itinerary of, you know, hey, here's what's going on in the building over the week, and that, so maybe it'll help a little bit identify some of the things that either conferences are at or things needed that they've had, things like that.
I, I really appreciate that. I, in my place of employment, those goals are presented for the Board of Education. And I, it's an opportunity to communicate to the community, community of what the schools are focusing on in my. Is our building goal something that other board members would like to see?
Oh, they definitely should be presented, you know, once they get there.
I think it'd be part of what the.
Oh, yeah.
The routine that just, it'd be established. There are so many things taking place last year and this year. That's why I really like to see us prioritize. We can keep adding to the place, but I, I think we need to get a little bit of order.
No, it's, that's the same for staff, too. I mean, so much has been, you know, this educator effectiveness and things like that. It's a different game now, so it's, it's like, where do we find time to teach?
All right, so item number 12 is topics for action to resume Robert's Rules of Order. Anyone willing to make a motion to resume Robert's Rules of Order?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks. Is there a second?
No second.
Thanks, Courtney. All those in favor of resuming Robert's Rules of Order, please say aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. And the motion passes unanimously, one, two, three, four, to zero. So the last item on our agenda this evening is to adjourn into closed session. We have a recommendation that the school board adjourn in a closed session where the board will consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of the district administrator pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19, point 85, section 1, section C. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Marie. All those in favor of moving into closed session, please say aye. Aye. All those against, say nay. And the motion passes unanimously, four to zero. I would like to take a five-minute break to grab some water and use the restroom. So I, with the ready meeting closed session, that leaves 15. That would be wonderful.
Good timing, tonight.
Thanks, too.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your work on the.